First thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the March 24, 2025, and the April 8th special session. Anybody have any comments regarding the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now approve the agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we'll go on to new business. We have a public hearing in request to consider a conditional use permit. We'll start with staff report.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. I do not have a presentation tonight, but I have the map pulled up so we can at least see what we are talking about. This is a request that I was first made aware of by Superintendent Jeff Drake. There have been a lot of conversations in classrooms at the administrative level about the connectivity within the building and then surrounding the building for Wi-Fi and cell service. It apparently leaves a lot to be desired. So the solution is to put a new cell tower on the school property. The application that came in indicates that the cell tower would be placed down near the football stadium. So there's a property, well, it's all one piece of property, but there's a, like a big shed building down there. The cell tower would be located on or near that building itself. There was a mailing that went out to residents within 350 feet of the location. And we do have some people in the audience here tonight who would like to maybe have some questions answered. So when it comes time for the public hearing, we will hopefully hear from them. But the request is again, a cell tower. We run it through a conditional use permit process because that is what our code tells us to do when an administrative permit for a telecommunications facility is not applicable. In this case, since this is a new tower, just doing an administrative permit is not applicable. Therefore, we are running it through the conditional use permit process that just lays out, you know, that it's not going to be detrimental to the health and welfare, et cetera, that it's not going to be completely out of character with the area. So I'll just maybe run through a little bit of that. And then also give at least one update on some feedback that we've gotten from first responders in the area regarding the, the location of the cell tower. So the staff report does indicate that criteria has been met in all seven necessary locate locations, all the criteria that needs to be met for a conditional use permit has been met, that it's going to be a fine fit in the area specifically because this is near the football stadium that does have large light towers. So a tower that is 90 feet tall is not going to be completely out of character. Is it visible? Yes. And in that case, we did have outreach from, I believe it was the State Historic Preservation Office that is aware of cell tower applications. They know where towers are going in. They do reach out to a municipality and ask, is this going to interfere with any local or national designations for historic structures? In this case, we did have two houses that are historically registered. However, they're on the other side of the school from where the location of the cell tower is going to be. So I did kind of make the, the call that that's not going to be an issue. The, the Historic Preservation Office was made aware of their locations and did not follow up on it further. So I believe the view shed is clear from those properties. So again, all of the criteria were met. In conversation with our police chief, there was a question that was brought up, or with, sorry, with our fire chief, there was a question that was brought up about the local system that's used for emergency response. It, it does use some radio waves. And so the question was asked, well, is this going to in any way interfere with that system? He did follow up on that further and reported back today in an email that there is no interference that is going to come from the use of this cell tower. There is, no microwaves are being used. It is fiber. That is what he said. So the armor system will be untouched. So in that case, the conditions that staff placed were to receive all necessarily necessary approvals under the Minnesota State Building Code because this structure will also require a building permit. And then written confirmation must be provided by Ottertail County Dispatch that the proposed facility will not interfere with the Allied Radio Matrix for Emergency Response System. And that is what I received today from the fire chief. So that condition is met. The buildings, building permit condition, I believe, will be met once that permit process takes place. And then any compliance with further conditions that the Planning Commission could place would also obviously be brought before the council. So that I think is going to wrap up my staff report. If anybody has questions about the staff report, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we do have a representative of the towers, which is the applicant company here, who can answer any questions about the project itself. And I will leave it to you guys to decide what you want to do next.
Perfect. Thank you, Clara. All right, we will open it up for the public hearing. If anybody wants to come up and say anything, just please state your name and where you live and, and then let us know what you're, what you want to say.
Neil Herman, 702 East Beach. I have some questions. You identified the general site. Could you identify the specific area that it would cover? Because in the draft, it says removal of trees.
Sure. And maybe you have a better idea? Like, this over here is the.
Yeah. So what we're proposing is actually going to be right here on the north side of this building. We specifically selected this location with partnership of the district because of the natural vegetation that's existed on the north end here. We are not removing any trees. So all those trees on the north side of this fence are staying. Those will be able to obscure all of the ground equipment and then the majority of the lower half of the tower from any, you know, the neighborhood up here to the northwest, you know, people travel on that road. And then the building here will also obscure it from the south. So that, it was specifically chosen because of the existing nature of that area that will obscure it from, from view or help obscure it from view.
I have another question on that same. The path that goes from the parking lot to the tennis court, that path will not obstruct it and will still be there?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we're not touching anything. So there's no tree removal. We'll, we'll be within, there's already an existing fence here. So we are within on the south side of the fence, north side of the building. It's already been either developed by the parking lot or they use it for some storage for just, you know, lawn equipment and extra materials, that type of thing. But we will not be removing any of those trees. We're not impacting any of the trails. I believe right now, there's a dirt trail on the north side that the school uses for like a cross-country type of track when they're running on their loop. So we're going to maintain that. That will be an unlit path.
On the, on the write-up here, it also mentions lights if applicable. Are there lights on top of this tower?
No, on this tower, there, there will not be any lights. So we're not required by the FAA due to the height of the scenario. So it will be an unlit tower.
And that was the other question. Now, does the school benefit financially each year from the tower being placed there?
I don't know.
Yeah, there, we, it's a lease agreement, absolutely. Yeah, so we're, we ventured into an agreement with the school district where their comments needed on any annual basis.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm Madeline Herman. I also live at 702 East Beach, but I think maybe it would help you if you knew where we lived. I don't know if I can mention, but I can, I can make it closer.
Within 80 foot.
Right here. No, it's, it says 150. I'm getting dizzy.
She's got the arrow on.
Where is it? Right here.
There.
Okay. It's, I got out of it that we're 155 feet on page seven. Does anybody have what we were looking at?
We have the packet, yep.
So anyway, that's where somehow 2 East Beach is. It's very confusing because it looks like we are in Freiburg. We're at the Red Barn if you ever go up to the Y. So that's where we are. And from my window, I see the football stadium. I see the football stadium, which they use for soccer and track, open to the public anytime for free use. They can just go on and off. It's wonderful. I see a children's playground and deluxe basketball courts. It's wonderful. And tennis courts. I can see this all from my window. Very well used. And it says, it's under number one, meets the following criteria, would not be detrimental detrimental to public health. And then a little farther below, it says, is not expected to produce emissions, noise or activity detrimental to public health or safety. With all the children from, I think it's fifth grade that use the playground all the way up to adults. I hope it's right because I would hate to have something put in, in that beautiful outdoor area that would be any cause for alarm, for illness now or in the future. And then I was going to ask about the easy access roads that are already there to get to, to the pool when it's put in because I expect to do, it will be. What I see is going to make much difference. But are you talking about through that bus barn off, road off Freiburg?
So yeah, they would, since the tower is anticipated to be in this fence area by this building here, they would use that access road.
Because that parking lot is missed.
Okay.
There's no road there.
Right.
It's a parking lot.
Yep. Yep, that's, that is maintained solely by the school district. So that can certainly be something that we.
And so they must store in the outside of the, the tree side of the building. They can't get, I don't.
Yeah, I would. I would assume that they pull up in front of the building and then perform their maintenance.
Yeah, so that, I was wondering whether they consider a decent road to get in.
Yeah, the, the specifically in the staff report, the questions about roads would be mostly related to city roads. This would be.
This is school. I know that because.
This would be the school district having to maintain their access road.
Okay. Let's see. Well, when I was trying to, there's a page in your material that shows all kinds of colorful signs, warning signs that are going to be put up. But I couldn't read them very well because they are printed. I didn't get my new glasses. They're coming. And so I really couldn't, and I wasn't able to pull it up on my computer.
Okay.
And so I wasn't able to enlarge it or anything, so. Are you referring to this page? Yes.
Could you, you read it for me because I can't. What is this saying?
This one says notice, radio frequency fields beyond this point may, uh, may.
Exceed.
Exo, I can't read it. Exos?
Exceed.
Exceed. The FCC general public exposure limit. They all posted signs and.
Site guidelines for.
Working and.
Working.
In radio frequency environment.
And so they should know. They maybe get a bigger sign. Yes, with better, you know, posting. What other one do you want? Well, that was the main one because I was just wondering. You're looking for safety. Yeah. Like I said, I see everybody that can, they go down as soon as the weather gets nice and use it, just really make good use of it. It's, it's just a wonderful facility if none of you have been up there to see everything that the kids and adults can use. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any more information about kind of the radio frequencies and health impacts that you could share with us?
Yes, so we, Verizon operates under multiple regulatory jurisdictions. So it's a heavily regulated industry. They operate well below all of their required emission levels. There is zero evidence of any kind out there that there's any sort of negative impact from the emissions from cellular towers out there. There, there's lots of public and private studies that have been done. A plethora of investigations additionally. The signs there, they're required for us to post by the FCC and those are primarily for when workers who haven't yet been trained in, you know, exposure or on-site. So it's, we have, as required by law, have anti-climbing measures. And it will be fenced to prevent anybody from being able to get up into any area that would have any possibility of an emission, you know, negative emissions effect. But all those signages are what's required by us to post on the tower. And it's more notice to any workers who are going out there before they climb their tower that those, you know, that they're made aware of, you know, any possible risk and that they're trained in how to operate when, you know, replacing antennas on a tower that's actively transmitting that, that type of scenario.
Okay. Is there noise? Is there quite a bit of noise?
No, no, there, there's no noise. The generator will kick on maybe once a month for about 15 minutes just as a test run to make sure it's still operational. But there, there's no, no noise, no emissions. It's designed to be completely autonomous. So once the tower's up, the only time anybody's ever out there is if something breaks and needs to be replaced or just as technology changes that they're out there to, you know, upgrade the equipment itself. But they're, they're designed to be ran completely autonomously. So it's very minimal impact for, you know, traffic or noise or people on the tower, that type of thing.
We did get quite a bit of wind and weather here pretty, you know, consistently. So I have no idea what studies have been done for protection of that type of scenario.
Yes, so every single tower specifically designed for the environment that we're putting into it, we have a lot of industry standards that we're required to abide by. So they'll do a soil sample or they did a soil sample. And that's how the foundation design is determined. They are designed to withstand a massive amount of loading from a weather event. In the event that there truly was a catastrophic weather event where you'd have catastrophic failure, the towers are designed to be able to collapse in on themselves. They don't pose any risk to, you know, you know, falling over like an uprooted tree and landing on a shed or landing on, you know, a neighboring property. I mean, in this case, 80 feet is really low, but there, there's zero risk, risk to that. I mean, for a weather event to happen at a magnitude for this tower to come down, you're looking at, you know, a massive loss of life scenario where your school isn't going to be there anymore.
How about the, the tower creating like a whistling sound because of the wind? That kind of a thing? Never get any complaints of that?
No, no, we have not any complaints about that. I know in past, there's been some scenarios where that's happened just to, to equipment design. But in this one, they've all advanced pass out. So there, there's no noise. They're all rated for very high wind loading. And they're all designed to have, you know, zero, zero noise coming off of it from that. They're, they're very well engineered.
Okay. And just to be sure, there, you don't expect that there will need to be trees removed along that buffer or that tree screen on the north side?
No, we're not removing any of the trees to the north. Nope. So right now, that's, the area's already fenced there. We're going to be inside of that fenced area. And then we're just taking out on the western fence. We're taking that fence out and putting in a gate. So we're 100% contained within the, I guess, the maintenance facility components already exist.
And ingress and egress will be expected to happen through that area too, not from the north side of the property. I'm just, I'm just confirming. This is, I don't, I don't need, you explained it very well already. I'm just confirming.
Yep. So it'll just be just to the west there.
Understood. The other thing, it won't produce emissions, noise or activity detrimental to public health?
Absolutely not.
Right? Because that's, these people's, I think, you know, primary concerns are all three.
No, no, absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
So there was some off-mic discussion earlier that I'm not sure if the mics picked up. So in addition to the no tree removal expected with this, no lights on the tower, that's.
That is correct. Yeah, there's, this will be an unlit tower. We, only white towers are required by the FAA. And in this instance, we are not required. So it will be unlit.
Yep, just because that happened off mic, I wanted to get that on there.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Any further comment?
Is there any evidence of radio interference on, on radio or TV in close proximity to it? And if it were, is there a number or some contact person besides an unknown number that we would call with questions about this?
Yeah, so there, there's no interference whatsoever. So all, every single frequency that operates, whether it's from your.
Do you want to, sorry, can you come up and speak into the mic?
Yeah, so there, there's absolutely no interference in regards to the cellular communication. So all these, every frequency is registered and managed by the FCC. And your, you know, from FAA to airplanes to your E911 to AM towers, everyone has their own specific frequencies that are registered and authorized to operate on. And none of those frequencies interfere with each other. They're all dedicated bandwidth within there for each and every, you know, organization, carrier, et cetera, to operate in. So there is no interference with, with anyone. And I did speak with your fire chief about the emergency services system that you guys have because they, they had that same exact questions and they operate on two completely different frequencies. So there is no risk of there being interference between the, you know, what is the cellphone frequency versus what is being operated with any, anything else in the community.
Thank you. Any further comment? All right. Well, I appreciate all of your, your comments and concerns. And we'll close the public hearing with that and bring it back to the commission for discussion. If there is no discussion, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the conditional use permit with the conditions outlined by, in the staff report.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign? All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is old business, subcommittee update. As everyone may recall, there was a subcommittee, there was discussion at our last regular meeting, I believe it was at our last, yeah, regular meeting regarding a request from a council member, Leighton, regarding a request for a standalone garage for one of his constituents. And we established a subcommittee to potentially come together, put together a draft ordinance for us to review. So you and Paul, Nate and Paul, were on that subcommittee. So I guess since Paul's not here, I'll turn to you, Nate, for an update on that.
Yep, Wayne also joined us as well in some of that. So Paul kind of took the lead, marked up some draft. And I don't know if you have that to share or throw up on the screen at all, Clara, but.
I didn't see any markings in it.
Okay, we had a red line going around. So I'm, I'm not sure which, which version he shared with you, I guess.
I don't know if putting it on the screen right now would be helpful or how is it?
Yeah, I mean.
I feel like I need some time to review it, but.
Yeah, that would be just fine. I mean, and I, I'd be okay with, I mean, without Paul and Wayne here, I'd be fine with tabling this until they're able to be present and speak to it as well. I mean, Paul did a lot of legwork on marking up the document. A lot of the language is based on the Watertown ordinance. We had some back and forth discussion on similar to what we kind of discussed with the, do you have your neighboring property owners essentially sign off saying, yes, no? I think the 55% was the one that we went on. Hearing some from concerns out in the community, I actually think that's kind of a valid thing to, to stick with and let your residents in the neighborhood have a little bit more of a say and input into what gets built. So I would be in favor of still having the RG overlay district, but it would also be able to provide an opportunity for neighboring residences to weigh in on whether garage gets built there or not. Aside from going through the purchase, the parcel, combine the two parcels and then you can build your garage.
It should be adjacent.
Well, that's the path we have now.
Adjacent to what?
Sorry, I misunderstood what you're saying. You're saying what we have now is that it must be adjacent. That's not what you're suggesting in the overlay.
No. Right now, we, you wouldn't have, if it was adjacent, you don't have to have your neighbors sign off on it, right? So that process would still remain in effect if that, the path you wanted to go down, if it wasn't an adjacent property, like if it was across the street from you or a block away or, you know, maybe you owned a vacant lot somewhere else in town that you own a whole quarter of it, whatever that may be. Would you allow you that opportunity to build that structure and also allow your neighbors to have some input, whether yea or nay, right? And then if you get 55% of that, neighboring properties to sign off on it, I don't, I guess I fail to see what the issue is, so. That's kind of where we're at.
Okay.
So are we waiting for the other two gentlemen to chime in? Or what are we going to do with this info?
So I think the, the, the plan is, is we haven't approved any ordinance yet.
Right.
So we just working to get something to look at. So I guess I would hope, there was, there was some comments made by council member Leighton at the last city council member regarding our timeliness of making a decision. That's how I took it anyways. And so I would like to at least get a draft in front of us sooner rather than later so we have ample time to review it ahead of next month's Planning Commission meeting and that we would have it as an action item next month at our, at our meeting.
I think that's fair, absolutely.
Any other discussion on?
So you're, in your community, in your subcommittee meeting, if it's not an adjacent lot to an existing home and it's elsewhere, like you said, across the street, down the street, and there's a 55% potential need for agreement. So the, the homeowner or the, the person that's going to develop this property needs to go through, you know, maybe an architect. Maybe they need to do certain types of investments into something where the neighborhood may say, yeah, no. So how, how does that work in, in your discussion? Did, did that come up?
I mean, like, from what perspective are you looking at this? Like, they may start a design and not have all of them.
They may, they may start investing already into this project, maybe doing soil samples, maybe figuring out structure stability.
Right. Also, before they would do that, I mean, that's where I think right now, we don't have a path forward and people get hung with like, oh, I bought this lot to build a garage and now city says I can't because I don't own the house right next to it.
Right.
So now we're providing them a path to be able to actually do that if it's conducive to the rest of the neighborhood, right? So like anybody that's investing in property, you need to do your due diligence and understand what the processes are, what the zoning requirements are. So before they would go down that path, hopefully they would educate themselves and know like, this is the path that we, you need to take in order. So before they would go down that path, hopefully, they would educate themselves and know, like, this is the path that we, you need to take in order to be able to do that, before you would start doing anything that you mentioned.
And how is the approval process, like, is that through the city? Like, do we have to have signed approvals from neighbors? And how, what's the, what's considered a neighbor? Like, how far from the lot?
I think that's, that's open for discussion, right? Of, of, you know, what is the radius that we would do? I mean, you could base it off our conditional use permit and anywhere that has a, you know, a property within, was it 350 feet? Could weigh in on that, could be just the adjacent properties. I mean, I, I think we're open to a lot of different input on the thing. It's just a matter of, I think we need to have a, a method to be able to do this.
Yeah, my concern about that would be that ownership of homes change. And your neighbor might be okay with it now, but then it changes the character of the neighborhood. And then you have new people, you know what I mean? It just forever changes the character of the neighborhood that you.
But that risk can.
Unring that bell.
But that risk lies with every single residential area. You're, somebody could come in and buy the house next to you and paint it bright pink and change the character of the neighborhood, without having any sort of zoning or approval or anything. Or they could cut down a beautiful tree that's in their yard that you loved forever, change the character of the neighborhood. We approve conditional use permits that the businesses can come and go all the time. It, it's just, it's such a little risk. And it's not like there's going to be garages popping up in every single vacant lot in town. But at least the vacant lots are going to be able to have another way to be utilized versus either one sitting vacant, or two, the houses become so dilapidated that they fall back onto the city as a burden, and they have to unload that. This provides another avenue for investment for other individuals across our city to better utilize the property, build the tax base, promote our local economy.
What have you discussed as being the minimum structure that would be required for it to be a garage? So in your example, you use a pink house, but I still recognize that there's a house at the end that can be painted a different color. What would the minimum garage requirement be?
I don't know if we had a minimum garage requirement on there. I'd have to double check on that, Mike.
How does this change a residential zoning now when you have no one living in that space? How do, how do we, how do we, you know, come to an agreement on what is residential zoning versus what is maybe commercial? We don't know what they're going to be doing in those garages. A lot of people will start doing business in there. And so that's going to perhaps create some tension.
Yeah, that's, I mean, valid point. However, that doesn't fall into our zoning ordinance, right? So if this is a overlay district in a residential, it's essentially for storage or recreational purposes to that sole prior property owner. As soon as you start conducting business in it, I mean, that's an ordinance violation.
How do we police that?
Same way you police any other ordinance in our community.
Oftentimes, it's complaint-based. If it's really obvious, then sometimes we'll have the city reach out initially. But a lot of times, it's, hey, my neighbor's got, you know, people showing up day and night for some reason. Can you look into it?
Yeah, these garages would mainly be storage. Or in this case, the case in front of us would be someone wants to build their man cave. And so it would be recreational.
Right, so I mean, that can look a lot of different ways, right? A lot of people like to have a golf simulator and something to do in the winter time and some space to be able to do it. Get together, host Super Bowl parties, whatever that may be, right? I mean, it just, it's such a little impact. I see very little risk and a lot of upside to it.
So I'll watch for a red, a further red light.
Well, yeah, I mean, unless Paul accepted all the red lines and sent you a clean version of it, very well could be, I would just get some clarification from him on it.
Yeah, maybe if we could even get that before we get the packet, so we have.
Yeah, we can send, I can send that out as soon as I'm sure what I have.
Yeah, and like I said, I, none of us are hard and fast on any of it. So I mean, feel free to offer suggestions or input on it. I mean, alter it, it's, we have an opportunity to kind of start from the ground here, so.
Yeah, we did get a letter, I think, did everyone receive the letter from Habitat, from, for humanity?
Yep.
Expressing their concerns. And I'll, I'll be honest, like, since, since our last meeting, like, you know, we had good discussion. I've been driving around town, and I'm like, you know, conceptually in your brain, it's, it's okay if it's like at some obscure lot in, you know, not across the street from my house. But when you drive like down Union, it's like, well, someone could just put a garage right here. Or, you know, like, and so I, I think, to your point, like, very little impact. I think it actually could have a great impact because we're putting, you know, the proposal is putting essentially an overlay on every residential neighborhood to allow for standalone garages to be built that aren't going to be maintained or have someone living in them like a residence would, so. I don't know, I'm.
But that's where, I mean, you still have the opportunity as a neighborhood to not basically okay it, right?
Yeah, and what does that process look like?
Well, right, and I mean, and that's something that we should define, right? I don't, I'm not saying we have that well-defined right now. Whether that's a written petition, or we hold a public hearing for it, which I don't think is the avenue that we'd want to go. I think there should be a form that's developed. And we get petition to property owners or a mailing goes out as part of maybe their building permit application, or even an inquiry before they even purchase the property. I mean, just some stuff that would need to be vetted out, absolutely. In certain situations, I'm picturing a couple properties on Union right now that would look better if they were tore down and had a garage there. I mean, there's just, there is blighted property all over the city. And to just say, well, if there was a vacant lot there, it could be a garage. Well, there's, a lot of these areas that you're referencing, there's not a lot of vacant property. And I don't know if the property would, unless it becomes so dilapidated that it gets tore down, then yeah, that's probably a real possibility. But, I mean, again, the neighborhood would still be able to have some control in that by having neighboring property owners essentially have to sign off saying, yeah, that's fine. I, I will just point out, I like, you, Sarah, I drove around the, the city, and there's actually quite a few garages that stand by themselves right now. That I don't know if they are on an individual parcel, or the parcels have merged, I'm guessing, maybe, I don't know. But like, a lot of them don't match the siding, or the style, or anything like that, right? So however the commission wants to put forth a recommendation to the council, I mean, whether that's, you know, can do that without a corrugated steel siding, or whatever conditions that they want to necessarily put on there, or whatever the process looks like. I'm, I'm okay with that. I just think that we need to develop a process for it to be able to somewhat allow this with some controllable measures on it, versus just taking a hard and fast no. Unless you buy the house next to it, then you can put up a garage. But if the house burns down, you got to tear the garage down with it. Doesn't really seem to make sense.
Oh, well, just for the sake of saying something, I kind of agree with, with what's been said and the concerns that have been raised. I think this is a non, ends up being a non-residential use in a residential zoning district. And I think policing it would be a problem. But it sounds like we got to see the draft before we, you know. If there's a draft coming, I'll review it with an open mind, but those would be my concerns.
What about a stipulation of that resident, like you said, man cave, have a living quarters within it that would be a specific size? With, you know, if they're going to do a man cave, they're going to have plumbing in there, which most garages don't, but some, some would. Maybe that's how we, you know, open up an opportunity for a rental in that space, or? And I don't know how that tax base changes for a garage versus a home. What changes there, I'm not sure if there is any. But maybe saying that it should allow for occupancy of at least one resident within that space. And maybe call it the he shed, the she shed, the, the new way of, because people are downsizing in their lives. They're thinking smaller living quarters as compared to the days gone past. And so, I mean, I have a garage with an apartment above it, so I built it that way on purpose. And it sits behind my home, but it also has a tenant in it at all times. Maybe that's an option to suffice those people's needs, and, and they would have a potential for income. And then they would have to keep it up.
Right. Yep.
To the, to the question about tax impact, I have that written down there. I can reach out to the county assessor's office and just see, you know, how, how do you tax these differently? What would this look like? And then there are communities, like Elbow Lake in particular, does allow standalone garages. So that would be a good comp essentially for us to look at to see, you know, does it affect the tax, the tax base of a neighborhood?
How does it get, how does, how do special assessments get appointed as well for that kind of structure? What, what happens there?
That's actually a really good question. Like, if there were going to be street improvements, I suppose it could be argued that somebody who's not living on that lot, but is just using it for garage purposes, may be assessed differently. That's, that's a process I don't know a lot about. It's the 429 process that normally runs through our engineering department. But I can ask some questions about what that could look like.
That's a good thought.
Yeah, it's a really good question.
Do we have minimum requirements for new home builds in terms of bedrooms, bathrooms, kitchens, things like that? Because essentially what we're talking about, you know, Dr. Alice's point, is just a small home.
We have size requirements. Building code may have different requirements to consider something a dwelling, but from zoning code, it's, it's just the size that we.
And running water, right? I mean, it has to have running water.
Yeah, we actually don't reference that in our residential code necessarily. Again, that would be through the building permit process.
A man cave with no running water might become interesting for the neighbors, from a practical standpoint.
Well, and I, and I mean, in, in this specific case, because this, this whole conversation is coming about because of one, one constituent who reached out. And in that constituent's case, at least in the outreach that I received from council member Layton, they had not been planning to connect to sewer and water.
Right.
So it was a man, man cave without, and I'm sorry, I hate the term man cave, so I'm only saying it in the.
That's how, that's how council member Layton, I think, what he referred to it as in his, in his correspondence, yeah.
They're, they weren't contemplating sewer and water connection. To me, which is just, then that's just storage, to me.
And so then that, then if the road was improved, special assessments would be an issue here?
Probably.
With, with that property.
So if you own a vacant.
Would it be?
If you own a vacant lot.
I'm not sure.
Don't you still get special assessments though? Because, I mean, that's.
It's just based on what's the value of the land, is it not? Whatever structures are added, does, I'm not sure.
I think it's assessed on your, on the footage that you own.
Is that what it is?
On the frontage of it.
The road frontage is what I thought.
Just the frontage, okay.
I think regardless of what's on the property or the tax.
It's irregardless? Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's a very specific process.
I think essentially, like, the special assessment can't be greater than the value that improvement brings to your property. So that's where, like, if you have a garage, and you have like a road improvement, there's not much value improvement. You know, because it's not a living quarters, so, I mean, that's where you could maybe get into some legalities.
And sometimes, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe this is outdated, but, but I thought sometimes the special assessment could be deferred until the development takes place, which in the case of a residential zone would be a home at, at present. So somehow theoretically, that, that could be an issue if you're building a, if you're not, if you're choosing not to hook into it, and then the special assessment never gets paid.
Because you're never going to take down the garage.
Yep.
You know, the other thing to take into consideration here is if, if we don't allow and develop a path forward, how many of these people that want this set up, either purchase property outside the city, move outside the city limits, and we don't add anything to our tax base? And I, I would have to venture to guess that there's a fair amount of those, right? I mean, you don't have to drive too far on the outskirts of the city to find other housing developments that aren't part of the municipality and aren't part of the city's tax base. So all of a sudden, we're just driving people that want to do this and develop out of our community.
But if it's not that many people, it's not, I mean.
Well, right, I mean, like, but again, if it's not that many people, then that's, then the risk is, is that much lower, right? On altering any thing that we would consider detrimental to a neighborhood. But again, I think we can put some process in place to make sure that the residents that would be impacted in that neighborhood would have an opportunity to weigh in on that.
Well, I, I wouldn't want to make the conclusion just based on tax base either, because I, I would wager that vacant land versus home versus shed is that, or shed garage, whatever, that the garage is going to add pretty minimal tax base to it. We're also, in some situations, perhaps cutting off residents that might be built there. So just to think a little more long-term, if people are going to move right outside city limits to put their garage there, and they can do that, I, that option's available to them, and it's probably been available for a couple decades, right? You know, I don't know how long we've had this accessory structure restriction, but probably quite a long time.
I mean, the evidence of that is right on the edge of town, leading, you know, going out toward prairie wetlands. There's a whole condo storage structure neighborhood, I guess you could say, right outside of a residential area.
Same thing past like I-94 Speedway.
Yeah. Okay, well, good conversation. Let's continue. I will provide a written update based on minutes from this meeting to councils so that they are aware that this is continuing to be a conversation. Since we know that we're going to be talking about this at the next meeting, I know there had been some discussion about making this a more public process. Is there anything that you would like me to do to make that happen? Or are we comfortable just including it as part of discussion for the next meeting?
I think we should open it up for public comment.
Okay. I'm not sure the best way to do that, maybe make an announcement at a.
Would the public be weighing in on what the, because it sounds like we may have a draft to review in advance. Would the public be weighing in on whether this is a good idea, or, because we could be talking about language, you know?
Yeah, good point.
Right.
Yeah, and, and that's about where I'm at, at the next meeting, is that I, I think it's good to talk about the language, but I think we need to conceptually try to understand or agree if we're in support of it generally. And then we can move into the rulemaking process, so to speak.
Well, for, for what it's worth, in response to any timing concerns, I mean, this conversation has to happen, and it just takes time, so.
Yeah, that is a good point, though, because I mean, we don't really want to, to get into language if we generally aren't in support of the ordinance itself. And we haven't really gotten an idea from the commission on whether, where people, where people are at.
And we'll see the draft by then, and then everybody can weigh in by then.
Yep.
Because I was gone at the last meeting, and it sounds like, you know, we got people gone today, so.
So I'll maybe just, I don't know, make some sort of an announcement, or add it to the announcements at a council meeting that this discussion is taking place at the planning commission level. And if people are interested, they can come. And if not, I mean, they'll see it when it comes, you know, if it makes it to that point, they'll see it when it comes forward. they'll see it when it comes forward as an ordinance amendment.
Sounds good. All right. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, council update.
Well, that's me.
Is that for you, Clara?
Yep. I just wanted to provide an update following some recent council meetings regarding actions that were taken at the planning commission level and then moved on to the city council for review and were went in a different direction, like the complete opposite direction than what planning commission had suggested. And it it's the the IUP discussions that we had, we had, we had public hearings on April, I believe it was the eighth, and sent on recommendations to approve two interim use permits to the city council. And those those were voted down at the council level. The reasons were not anything that were listed in the staff report as the as the findings of fact that had been presented. It turned out that council decided at at the meeting on the 21st to consider the Riverwalk and Speeze Pavilion as attractions within public parks for minors. So that hadn't been contemplated at the planning commission level, therefore that was not part of the discussion. So that was new discussion that happened on the 21st. So the applicants will be receiving denial letters from the city listing the specific reasons that it was denied. And again, the findings of fact from planning commission did not include those discussion points. So it looks very different from the discussion planning commission had at the council level. I just wanted to give you guys an update on that in case you had any questions or concerns about the work that you had done during the public hearings and then by when it got in front of the council, since those conversations went very differently. So that's the update. I I don't know exactly what's next for the businesses who were not approved for the interim use permits, but again, that is the only way to operate a cannabis business in downtown Fergus Falls.
So there was Sugar High as an applicant, correct? And Elevate?
Elevate, yeah.
And Elevate was too close to a park as well?
Yes.
Okay, because they were going to be downtown maybe or?
They would, yes, they're already operational downtown. They wanted to continue operations in where they are where they are currently and they were denied.
Got it.
And just to clarify, our ordinance, I think, says within 250 feet from an attraction or at a public park that attracts youth, something like that.
Yes.
And for Elevate, I think they used the edge of the parking lot, not the actual Speeze Pavilion. So they measured 250, it was 250 feet to the parking lot, not the actual attraction.
The same holds true for City Hall Park, too, right? It's the parcel boundary to the parcel boundary, I think, is how the ordinance is written.
Indeed, yeah. It's it's a boundary line to boundary line that was brought up. There was another thing brought up that I would like a little bit of help with.
Sure.
And it was this idea that the council could misinterpret what what an attraction is, right? And that got me think, because an attraction could be a group of students going along the Riverwalk and the Riverwalk is an attraction drawing them to that park, okay? It got me thinking along the lines of we interpret things all the time in our ordinance and we could be wrong in that interpretation.
Absolutely.
One thing that was brought up at that meeting was what would happen if the council was wrong with respect to interpreting attraction? And I think it was said there could be some form of liability. I look over here to these attorneys who have had some experience in municipal law and I watched it, I understood the argument, but I I don't, I'm I'm not there yet in understanding that that conclusion either. And I would appreciate some guidance from that perspective because we can interpret both sides of an argument all we want, but we have to put our best foot forward. And the idea that the business that would have been approved, if it was decided that that park was not an attraction, could then go after the council or go after us as the zoning board for making the wrong interpretation. It doesn't seem, it doesn't seem plausible to me and I would just like a little backup or support in that regard, but let me know. I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking to my left here. It's a little outside my practice area.
I think my understanding is is that the interpretation is based upon a standard of reasonableness in what a reasonable person could reasonably interpret an attraction for youth to be. And whether or not the statements made by council members putting forth that position were based upon reasonable understandings and knowledge in where they got, you know, where, how did they come to that interpretation? How did they come to that understanding? And whether or not that decision was what we call arbitrary and capricious or not. I think that, I mean, personally, I I think that the city does have a potential for liability in taking that position. I probably shouldn't say too much more on the record, but especially when you have council members openly making statements personally against it, you know, personally against the the businesses themselves and what they're doing as businesses and then making a decision that seems unreasonable or not so reasonable interpretation of of the statute, but.
I like to believe that the council, council members individually and all of us sitting here have some sort of like legislative immunity, though, from personal lawsuits. That's just my belief, it's not legal advice. But the council at large, in theory, could.
Yeah, no, I don't think people can like sue, you know, like people can't sue individual council members.
No, I I agree with that.
Or us, yeah.
But the council at large.
But the city, we're acting on behalf of the city, so, you know, and I always say, people can sue people all the time. It doesn't mean they're going to be successful, right? Like, people are like, well, can they sue me for that? Yeah, they could sue you for that, probably. Doesn't mean that they'll be successful on it, but yeah, so, yeah.
So exactly that was said at the city council meeting and that was a big reason why they did not, I it contributed to the reasons of why they did not vote to approve the permit. And I would just like some guidance. I would like a standard on that, the legal standard for that and just something to help me out. Okay, and I know we can't, you know, per on a personal level be sued, but the, you know, governmental bodies, you know, city councils, the the county commission has been sued before, but that's all I'm looking for here is I just want to know.
There are plenty of lawsuits out there that you can find where cities, counties are sued for denials of conditional use permits, interim use permits. Yep.
I can have the city attorney weigh in further if you would like.
I think, yeah, I think it would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, that's my whole update. I just, I like to keep you guys informed when something happens one way here and then goes differently when it gets to the next level in case you have questions or there's outreach that reaches you and you have all the facts.
Would that only come back to us if they reapplied for the IUP? I don't know what the process is if there's an IUP denied. I assume they have some sort of second review recourse somehow.
They would, yes. So we don't have a, we don't have a process for them to appeal the decision that's made on that interim use permit, so the only option left for them is to reapply. In this case, we actually have already received a new application for at least one of those entities. And the other entity is still struggling to essentially fi find a location that they'd be able to to get through with, I think. I hope that's safe to say.
So, yeah, I mean, they could go to the district court. I mean, their options are essentially to go to the district court or to move their business to a different location and see if the council will allow their business to operate in a different location.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
All right, anything else? All right, we will adjourn. Thank you.